We are starting the meeting at 7:04. So, let's first, all those who can stand to do the pledge of allegiance, please do.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we, I know Bill said he couldn't be here, Joe's not here, so we will seat Angel and Marcus tonight as regular members. All right. We have approval of the minutes. Bill is not here. I did read through, did everybody get a chance to read through any?
So you had two sets of minutes, remember that the 27th is just the minutes that said we held a, we held a public meeting on the tariff bill plan.
I think that was okay.
But nonetheless, since they were advertised meetings, we do need to approve those minutes.
Exactly. So, and does anybody, I did not have any changes to either sets of minutes, did anybody?
No.
So can I get a motion to approve, well, let's do, can, a motion to approve-
We can do it at the same time.
Oh, can we? Perfect.
Absolutely.
Can I get a motion to approve the March 13th, 2025, and the March 27th, 2025 minutes?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving March 13th and March 27th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So our first is a referral from the zoning commission, application ZC-25-07.
So this is, this is an applicant, or an applicant-driven petition, so this is not something that comes from staff. So we asked, really, the author, Terry Hahn, to come tonight and give you a brief overview. You have, you have the text amendment in front of you, and I thought maybe Terry could just kind of walk you through what, what the idea is and how we got here. And Terry, go ahead and move that microphone to you and press that green button, or the, press the button and it should turn green.
And I know you've been before as before. Welcome back. Thank you very much. Is, there we go. Okay, there we go. Good evening. My name is Terry Hahn. I'm Principal LED APC Land Planners. Kevin Casey, representing the Simsbury Holding LLC, who owns Tower Ridge, sent his regrets. He made a decision on a travel plan, thinking it was going to be cool, and ended up being a disaster. So he's still somewhere in New York City, and what he expected to be here long, long, long ago, like yesterday. So, we all did it sometime in our, so, we were here before regarding, I don't, let's, let's say, the question that came up is, what is Tower Ridge now? Okay? How do we understand what it is now that it is no longer a conventional golf course? And we've been working with George and Brittany and trying to figure out, how do we make this work? How do we make it make sense? There are seasonal uses that are there. The owner really wants to maintain it as an outdoor recreation facility, but there are things that don't make any sense under those existing zones and uses. For example, that the collective periodically has outdoor music. You know, there, there's just, there's a nonprofit helping meals there that doesn't fall under any category. And so it's, it's a, it's a bit, from a zoning perspective, of a mixed bag that doesn't really fit into anything concrete in the Simsbury zoning regulations for the definitions. So the idea was to try and come up with an understanding of what they really want to do with the property, and to develop a new category that this could be sort of understood on, and that we could go forward with in the future. Because clearly, the, the definitions for the R-40 and R-80 zones, which include golf courses as special exception, isn't really applicable here anymore. So, one of the things that we did submit was, we submitted a recommendation for a text change. We've added it into the non-residential uses, as you can see in red, just so that that's generally where it would go, because it goes under the residential zones. We're not proposing to change the zone. We're changing, what we're proposing to do is add a use into those non-residential use, uses. The text itself-
And you guys all have that text in front of you.
I have big ones, big words, just in case somebody needs that. Is following, and is fairly consistent with-
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no. So the special, maybe I should wait, but the special recreation-
Area.
Area. That's just so you can do any, like, you can't be more specific. We're keeping it general, because if they wanted to, right?
Correct. It is, it is as specific as we could make it with a general umbrella.
But it has a clear definition.
Yeah.
Has a definition.
Oh.
This is what it is.
Oh, okay.
And I think in the, I think the, Brittany, where is it?
So if you turn-
It's right, it's right in the first section, yeah. Yep, yep.
Oh, description, okay.
Yeah, so, so we integrated the definition right into the, the, what I'm going to call standard limitations, bulk requirements, that sort of stuff, right into the text. It would be added after the energy generating devices, and really looks at what limitations there are that we want to put on here, so that it's clear how to operate, how to approve, how to go forward. And we've taken pieces from the previous golf course things. We've taken pieces from some of the discussion that's been having about outdoor music, and we've been taking pieces from what we would call the event regulation component that you have later in your zoning regulations. The, I, I think this, this is doable, and one of the things that we did submit was an overall master plan for the property, so you could see kind of physically how it would work, you know, on that particular property, so to get an idea of what it would be. And that, going forward, any changes that would occur, there's, we're going to be coming in for an application for the, to transition the old tennis courts into pickleball courts, and maybe a mini golf, you know, that, that sort of stuff. So we'll be coming in with additional applications, that obviously will go through the special exception process for that additional use. But at least, we're not trying to fit those uses into the golf course category, because it doesn't work.
So you would, why would they have to come back for-
We, we, not, not for, for planning, but for zoning.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes. It's a special exception, yeah.
But why would it be a special exception if this was?
So if, if this ordinance, if this regulation passes, the, any new use on the property would require a special exception, because of the uniqueness of it in a residential zone. So it's kind of a safeguard in place, so-
Even with this in there?
Yes, yep.
Even, even with this in there?
Right, right.
So every time they wanted to add something-
So, so that's really the initial, as I understand it, and it'll be the initial special exception to expand upon the uses, and then if they want to do other changes, which it's mentioned in here, expanding the parking lot, adding to existing uses, it'd be a site plan. It wouldn't be a special exception all over again.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of the initial-
Got it.
Application.
That's what I, because I was like, every time they wanted to do, okay.
Right, right.
Sure.
That's bullet seven?
Yes, yep.
And it's also set up as a special exception, because, as you know, anytime you add a use into the overall zoning, it has the potential to be available to other properties. And so we felt that keeping it as a special exception would be the, the best choice.
And frankly, I, I think, probably, to, to a T, I think every non-residential use in our residential zones requires a special exception. Certainly, almost all, it makes sense to, again, yeah, we're trying, and, yeah.
Where is this next one?
You want to see it?
Oh, no, no, I mean, so you, you've submitted, I mean, okay, so, okay.
But again, that, so that's going to come as a special exception, once this text amendment goes through.
So the overnight lodging, is that going to include, like, campers, for example?
Yeah, it, it's not allowed.
Not allowed?
Not at all.
Because we had the commissioner that's absent was pointing a note to maybe noting there that we're not going to be, to prohibit recreational motor vehicles used in the-
We don't have any objection to that. That was, that's not the intent, you know, as long as it-
I find it very cogent.
You know, the, the idea would be, obviously, we're using mechanized vehicles for the disc golf and a few other things, but he's specifically talking recreational motorized vehicles, like, we have no objection to taking that, putting that as a prohibition.
Okay.
Angel, I'm glad you brought that up, because I agree a thousand percent with Bill. And, and it's, it's good to put that in writing, because there's been so much creep, and especially on our bicycle trails.
We have no objections. That was never, never our intent.
So yeah, just in case everybody's not familiar, Bill, Bill provided that recommendation to the, to the full commission, which is, I recommend we be added to prohibit recreational motor vehicle use in the zone, prohibit noise, noiseier injection of activities, so.
Good call.
Yeah, that was-
Good call.
Well, I agree, it was a really good call, but to that point, how does that interfere with golf carts and that sort of stuff? Like, when you talk about, you need a mule to, like, bring stuff over to the outside facilities. Like, I don't want to just restrict us so much that we can't use the equipment to set up for the outdoor.
But I think those are in the vein of, like, facilities, not, they're not the purpose anyone's going there. You know, no one's going there to ride the facility's cart, they're going for a-
Yeah.
That's fair. I just want to make sure that we're not-
Utility vehicles are recreational vehicles.
Yeah, these are recreational activities, golf carts are facilities.
I, I think we can phrase it in a manner that it's clear that it is a non, sort of required maintenance equipment, you know.
But that's a good point.
Yeah, for somebody who loves having a golf cart.
I know, no, it's, and God knows, I had enough bosses, treat them like recreational vehicles. Are they, I'm just curious, are the pickleball courts going to be public, or do you have to just-
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So maybe, you know.
Yeah, it'd be a league sign-up thing, and you go and sign up for your time. Yes, that's the intent. Yep, yep. So it would be available.
Basketball court?
No, we don't have any basketball courts, as of yet, you know, who knows?
Simsbury Farms has great ones, with the lights now working, that's good. Boys love that.
I mean, there, there's nothing here that's a membership club anyway, right? It's all-
No, correct.
And they must have facility stuff today for the, the disc golf stuff, right? The frisbees. They must have, like, some kind of trucks or whatever they use to maintain the property.
Yeah, it's, it's a, they, well, they have, you know, regular mowing equipment and all that stuff, but they also have some, some carts that take you, because there's some really remote holes.
Right, right.
So, in case you run into some kind of a problem or something.
Madam-
Chairman, I'd like to move that we, for the positive recommendation, to the zoning commission for application ZC-25-07 of Simsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC, applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations, Section 3, residential districts, and Section 17 definitions, to allow additional use, special recreation area in the R-40, comma, R-8-80 and R-6160 zones, with the additional provision to prohibit recreational motor vehicles, recreational motor vehicle use in the zone, including electric motorcycles, bicycles, quads, scooters, go-karts, snowmobiles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one more. I do have one more.
Sure.
For number nine, how do we determine 500 people? How do we get for that, for larger scales of events? Do we just, where do we get 500?
Ma'am.
Oh, sure.
You're just in that voting discussion thing. I wasn't sure if I could.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yep. It, it has to do with the capacity of the Tower Ridge Collective patio, and how many people that they have. So we were looking at a, it was a discussion that we went back and forth. We needed a finite number, to be able to say something was large enough to be able to qualify for this. It also has to do with the number of parking spaces that we have, and that sort of stuff, so that we would know that, it's just, it, it was a typical thing, and we also know we can limit the number of those. So it's consistent with the other elements in, in town.
Typical events, they probably don't have anywhere near 500, I imagine, right?
A typical event does not have 500 people.
Some idea what the standard, I mean, weekly, a couple hundred people?
I was going to say 150, 270, 275, is the higher number?
Yes.
You can factor more.
There, there are on occasion, and that's why we wanted to talk about that. And I do think that, even though it's not under your purview, I suspect that'll be a grander part of the conversation when we're reviewing the special exception, in terms of total number of events, and what they look like, and the schedule, and that kind of stuff. So those, those details we'll, we'll work through with the applicant, I think.
Yeah, we've already talked to the applicant about, as part of the master plan, that we submit, you know, we anticipate X number of events a year, you know, during the summer. Two years ago, they had a number of stuff planned, and it rained every time that it was planned. So it, it is so weather-specific that, you know, it's kind of like the, the Talke Mountain Music Festival, you know, how, how many years did every Friday night it rain? Yeah, so, it's, you can plan all you want, but the number of times it actually happens is probably one year out of five, you know, kind of a thing. It's very weather-specific.
Marcus, did I answer your question?
Yes. Can the parking currently accommodate 500 people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then yes, that answers.
Yeah, there's a lot of overflow now, so, yeah.
Yeah, there, it's very important that there not be parking on the street, and the, for the applicant, as well as for the town, I believe. You know, just, no parking on the street. You need to have clear road on Nod Road.
Yeah.
That corner stove.
Any other questions? All right. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's great what they're trying to do with the recreational stuff there. It's really kind of, you know, to give different options, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right. So, application ZZ-25-08 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission, it's a applicant for a text amendment to the town zoning regulations regarding the Simsbury Center Zone, Simsbury Center Zone, Section 6.2, Hartford Farm Base, Hartford-Simsbury Farm Base Code, Section 7, to incorporate state-enabled electric vehicle charging station infrastructure requirements. Wow, that's kind of a mouthful.
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, wow, wow, wow. What does that actually mean? Yeah, all right.
So this is a, an excellent example of taking a recommendation that is contained in your P O C D, under the sustainability section, to, to incorporate what was a, a state-enabled act from 20, from, from 2022, was a, it was the, I think it was the State Climate Act, and this was one of the items that was included in it. So it is a requirement today, but we thought it would be a good idea, and this body thought it would be a good idea, to have a recommendation in the P O C D to put in our zoning code, so when a developer's looking about parking requirements and those kinds of things, they'll know that, oh, even though it is a state requirement, we know that we're going to expect it and require it as part of our review. So, so, so what this text amendment would do, and it would apply to, to all projects over 30 parking, new projects over 30 parking spaces, it would require the developer to place or to install infrastructure, not the charging stations necessarily. They could if they choose to, but the requirement is for infrastructure, and we deem infrastructure as conduit, charger pads, electrical service, in order to provide for level two or higher future charging stations.
So you have to do the wiring, basically?
You gotta do, you gotta do the wiring. That's what you have to do.
But you don't have to put up the actual structure?
But you don't have to do that. That's correct.
Does it apply to properties that are adding units that already exist?
It would if, if, if the, the new parking area had 30 or more spaces. We wouldn't, we wouldn't retro the parking lot, no.
So the parking lot already exists, and they're just adding apartment units, let's say, and they're not adding parking spaces, this wouldn't apply?
No, the requirement is, is triggered by the number of spaces.
Okay.
I used to stall doors, I'm familiar with that.
So the parking lots that they're going to do with overflow?
Say that.
The parking lot for Talkeet?
I think it's already there, technically.
Yeah, so, 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 no, so the new, if they, if they put a, a new parking lot in with over 30 spaces, then the infrastructure would be required. Yes.
If we take, if we sign for this, right? If we vote for this today, it will be required.
Yes, yes. If, if it's, if you recommend, and the zoning commission approves-
But you have all these electric vehicles nowadays, so.
See, I thought they already had, but, yeah.
Oh, so this is commercial, not just residential?
Commercial and multifamily. Yeah, so apartment complex, it would, would apply to as, as, as with, you know, shopping center, or something like that.
So, silly question. I mean, I understand why we would require, well, why would we require people to do that now, instead of at their own expense at a later time?
It's a state law?
So-
A state law saying we could ask them to do it? Is the state law saying we have to do it?
No, this is a requirement. The state law is, is a requirement.
It's mandated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this, yeah, we're, yeah.
I'm not into the details today.
Right, something that made it sound like it was-
No, it's just me.
Actually, I hear-
It says a municipality may, through its legislature, may, you know, require. So it's like, it doesn't seem like we have to.
Well, this says shall.
Shall, shall is more like a-
Shall require.
No, 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 that, that, so that last sentence says that a municipality may require more than 10%.
More than 10%.
The requirement is 10%. That's the requirement. So anything over 30 spaces, you got to do 10% of the spaces as, as enabled, but-
We could do more.
A locality could, could choose to require more than 10%.
Correct.
This draft does not suggest that.
George, do we have some idea of the percentage of cars in town that are electric versus not?
We do not. I do not.
Okay, yeah, I just don't-
But I bet you that's noble. I bet you there's data on that.
I bet Mark knows.
I bet you Holly, under the sustainability committee, private, has a sense of that.
Yeah, through property taxes, I'm sure we do.
Yeah, I think we, I think it's noble.
I mean, I don't dislike the 10% number, I just am curious how it relates to how many we have. I mean, I think about my own neighborhood, and there's probably, you know, four or five out of 60 or 70 houses, I don't know what, I mean.
I think nationwide, the percentage isn't particularly high in the growth that's been seen.
Those are going to be changing.
Well, yeah.
And that is, that marketplace is really going to change. I don't think we're going to know.
Right.
And we're talking commercial space, so there are going to be visitors out of town, so we cannot control that as much.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, people in town, people out of town, you're right.
But for a multi, you know, for an apartment complex, since it's got 300 units and 500 spaces, then, you know, 50 of those spaces would require, but I, I mean, I think the marketplace is going to drive the owner and developer to provide the charging station. I mean, there's going to be a point where folks aren't going to move into this apartment complex if there aren't chargers.
Yeah.
Well, especially, I mean, there's not, is there any pub, public ones left in town, since the ones at Town Hall are down, or they're gone, I guess?
They are, they are no longer-
Yeah.
Present.
Yeah.
Oh, the ones at Town Hall are?
Correct.
They were, they were removed?
Yeah.
They were.
For what reason?
I, I just think an evaluation of, of, of the level of charging and the costs associated with providing free, and the number of users, and a whole bunch, a whole bunch of-
Was charging free?
I think it was, it was, I, well, it was all free. Yes, it was free.
No, it was free.
We were paying, but I think, I think it's consideration about, about bringing them back in a-
Unless we're going to put a gas station for free, we should have a requirement.
No, I thought it was like a credit.
I agree. But people using it like that, personally.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Well, good for City Hall keeping a tab on expenses.
Yeah, now we can spend it on planting, yeah.
So I also think that this particular issue is just one that we're going to pay attention to.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're just going to monitor it, and when the demand is different, and, you know, we may come back at another time and say, we should really, we should require full charging stations at, you know.
And this only, this only requires they be installed, I mean, not even installed, just that the-
That's right.
The infrastructure is there.
That's right.
So I mean, it could be something that's provided by the owner, or charged later, it doesn't even get to that.
Is this what you're going to put in? Is that what's going to go in, or is the wording not, is it add new definitions to Section 17?
So there's, so, so the language that we are suggesting starts at the bottom, at the bottom portion, starting with electric vehicle charging station, page one.
Oh, we touched, okay.
And then it goes over to page two.
Gotcha.
We're also suggesting changes to Section 17, which is definitions.
Okay.
So, to, to get, you know, we shouldn't talk about things without definitions. I think that's one of our lessons learned from current regulations, which has a lot of definitions, and actually, most don't even exist in the regulation, so.
We're pretty much adopting the regulation.
Okay.
We are, I, I, I almost identical to, to the regulation as it's set in state law.
Oh, well, so this is the, and then the definitions are added, okay, all right.
I don't know that the definitions are-
Okay.
I chose-
Somehow we have, we have more than I would imagine, if I make some sense.
Any more discussion? Any questions?
Is it possible to give me approval with sort of the caveat that if we find from the, you know, property tax area or something that, you know, we have 30% of town for some reason, with, you know, these, maybe we consider something more than 10%. I mean, I don't know what the number is, I can't imagine it's even 10%, but if it's much more than 10%, maybe we consider changing that number.
I think we can change. I don't know that I'd want to put that in here. I mean, I, because we can change.
So I, I would suggest, I would suggest, having this part of your recommendation, that zoning commission consider the, the number of electric vehicles in town.
There you go.
As part of their deliberation. And you have to, and then, and then we'll work with the accessory, we'll figure out how to get the data if we can get it. Because that's, that's what's important.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a good proxy. I mean, you're obviously going to have to account for people from out of town, to Angel's point. I mean, you know.
Right.
Whatever we have is, is one thing, with all the neighboring towns have, might be slightly different, I don't know.
And there may, this, you know, some of this all may be changing. We, so we, we have our first, we've got an application that is pending, it hasn't gotten the zoning commission yet for site plan, but, you know, our biggest shopping center is teamed or partnered with a group that's going to provide 16 charging stations at Simsbury Commons. It's, you know, in, in their existing parking lot, essentially.
For free?
No, not for free.
Is that the one on 44?
Yes.
Yeah. But they already have an existing parking lot, so this wouldn't apply to that.
Yes, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. I mean, they're doing it, it's part of their strategy.
Right, right.
They're going to have to go back and retro, so they'll have to dig up the parking lot and do retro, and do all that kind of stuff.
So to Nick's point, if, if we find that it's 10% or lower, then it should just stay at 10%, but if we find there's more than 10% of people, I mean, then they might want to factor that in?
Yeah. I just think, I would just suggest we provide the data to the council.
Yeah, and let them, that's a good idea.
And I don't know that you didn't have to include that. We will provide the data to the council.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion?
I move, I move that the Planning Commission forwards a positive referral to the zoning commission for application ZC- number 25-08 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission, applicant for a text amendment to the town zoning regulations, Section 10 and Section 17, the Simsbury Center Zone, Section 6.2, and the Hartford-Simsbury Farm Base Code, Section 7, to incorporate state-enabled electric vehicle charging station infrastructure requirements, and add that the zoning commission consider the number of electric vehicles in town as part of their deliberations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One second. Any questions, comments? Right, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion, motion carries unanimously. Say it.
I just have a question. It doesn't apply to, which way, I was going to plug that next time. The Hartford Farm Base Code, does that just, does that apply to any other property other than the Hartford?
It does not.
You're just trying to include all the ones that have to.
Remember, we have got three ordinances that apply to it. In that case, that now only applies to 120 acres in that spot. Well, plus, plus the 40 on the other side.
What's going on with that? Any news?
I have no news. It's still in litigation. I, I did want to make just one, one update for the meeting on the 27th. So we, Brittany sent, did I send an email, or did you send it? I sent an email yesterday. So we will have, unfortunately, we weren't able to get to the presentation today from the Tariffville Neighborhood Plan, but it will be fully ready with a full draft on that date, and that you'll get that in advance and presentation. But we will also have a public hearing for a re-subdivision application at 40 Holcomb that has drawn a little bit of interest among, among the neighbors. So, we are also out of any locations, we have to be. So, uh, we are also out of any locations, we have to be at the main meeting room, so we, um, we are gonna schedule the Tariffil Neighborhood Plan, public, it's not a public session, uh, presentation at six P M. and then do the irregular public hearing and meeting at seven P M. So we'll, we'll kind of stagger that, cause I'm sure that our, so many of our friends from Tariffil will wanna come to the presentation.
Is that gonna be here or?
No, we're gonna be in the main meeting room.
Okay.
There's nowhere to go except for that place.
Okay.
So I just wanna let you know, what will, essentially, it'll be a special meeting for the Tariffil Neighborhood Plan from six to seven, regular meeting at seven.
Perfect. Carter Binger, when you say main meeting room, you mean down the hall or at Town Hall?
I'm sorry, at Town Hall.
The little tiny one, one on the stage.
Your, yeah, your di, your media, your dais and council chambers, or whatever we call it.
Okay.
Yeah. Prefer to, as the main meeting room.
I know, is that, all right.
That's all, yeah.
Did you ever, well, I'll ask away. Okay, so anything on the Tariffil, I mean, that we need to know before two weeks? No, I mean, anything, um.
So we should have a draft, um, for you probably later ne, later next week before the meeting. And so the idea is that, um, to review that plan and then S L R will come to make their presentation, any, um, cause suggestions, edits we have, we can tell him then, and then they would come back again for, to have it officially received or adopted.
You get a, we, 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 we expect that you'll have a full draft, um, of, of the plan with recommendations and implementation and pictures and, and kind of, you know, all set.[1558.12]